Okay, we're slightly behind, but better late than ever. We're gonna call the Castle Hill Special City Council meeting to order and determine if a quorum is present. A quorum is present. We will forego our invocation and pledge of allegiance tonight and get into citizen comments. I don't know that we have anybody signed up to speak.
I don't think so.
We don't have anything on the consent agenda, so we'll go into our first item. Conduct budget work session number three for FY 2026 city budget. Mr. Duque.
Mayor, council, thank you. So this will be brief. We want to address some revisions that have been made or to the proposed budget and then get into the tax rate discussion. So in the general fund, we have made, I believe, four changes total, and there's one pending. On the revenue side, we're proposing to increase the revenue from the 8.27 million to 8.31 million. We believe we can increase the sales tax allocation to 1,596,000. The current allocation is 1.555 million. We have seen, continued to see a positive trend with sales tax, but there are still concerns with the overall economy. This is leading us to rather than budget, the carrying forward the estimate to finish this year, which is about 1.62, I believe was the number we were guessing. We're projecting to stay under that just because of the uncertainty with the economy. There is a possibility of also adjusting the property tax revenue, which we will discuss as we get into taxes, but we did not presume that yet, so we haven't made any revisions to our documents. Under expenditures, there have been four, I mean, three changes. And this has increased the expenditures from 8.5 million to 8.57 million. It's a little over $60,000. We had to increase our IT support allocation from 28,000 to 60,628. We met with Bridgehead, which is our IT support contractor, and had them give us new numbers to address the needs of the city's IT system in addition to day-to-day support. There were a number of projects that they identified in addition to the everyday support that needed to be done. There needed to be some additional cybersecurity training. So we had to adjust that number. We had started that process meeting with that vendor before our budget presentation, but that that was just a timing issue with them to get that number. Next, we've reduced the audit allocation from 38,000 to 32,000. This is based on the audit service proposals that we received. No matter which vendor you would select at our next city council meeting, you'll be fine at that $32,000 number. We don't have a single audit next year, so we we're fine at that $32,000 number. And then finally, we've increased the property casualty insurance allocation from 88,000 to $122,000. This is after we received the rerate numbers from TML IRP. Was that a week and a half ago? About two weeks ago, they came in and they gave us our rerate numbers and we had to bump that up.
Ouch.
I don't think we were the problem. I think it's an insurance industry as a whole problem and you know, they, it's a pooled risk pool. It's a risk pool, so sometimes other people's risk impacts ours, so. So those are the four changes that we have identified and will be presenting next week when we present the, we've already presented a proposed budget, but this will, this, this is a, this is the fancier proposed budget. This is the updated one. That'll be coming on Monday, on Tuesday. Are there any questions?
Mr. May?
I always ask this question and I ask it for context. Do you have an apples-to-apples comparison of, say, the last six months in sales tax trend compared to the previous year budget? As we're going in, because the sales tax trend is important, I think, for the councils to know. If we don't have the figures today, if I could get that next week.
When, when, every month we get the, the report from the comptroller, they'll post it. It's usually the 10th or the 11th that gets posted on their website. And you can go back, I think, I think they keep about 18 months of records on there. But yes, we go back and we compare it to same time last year, month to month, and then we compare the same period of time going backwards. We try to keep a year-to-year, but we also keep a rolling comparison. So yes, I can, we can share that. That's not a problem.
Right, that's, that's all.
When I get August, I'll update it and I can email it to y'all, so that'll probably be Monday or Tuesday. Just depends when the comptroller posts it. Okay. So in the general fund, what has happened, the new numbers are revenues are going to end, are would be 8,319,281. Expenditures would be 8,572,918, resulting in a drawdown of the general fund fund balance by 253,637. This has not gone in the right direction since the last meeting. The last meeting, it was 234,000. Now, we are going to discuss taxes that can impact this number. I hope everybody slept well last night. Taxes can be boring. But, okay. So the tax rate timeline for the process is we did receive the, the tax rate calculations from the county. Was that Friday? Yeah, it was Friday when we were at the courthouse. I got those. And and then we got the, we're submitting the calculations to you all to discuss tonight. On the 12th, there'll be agenda items on the, on the regular council meeting to discuss the, the tax rate, to take a vote on the proposed tax rate, to schedule the public hearing for both the tax rate and the budget. Nora and I will sit down with Nicole tomorrow and work out the notice to get that in the newspaper as soon as possible. And then we would need to have a special meeting on either the 3rd or the 4th of September to have a public hearing prior to adopting the budget and tax rate at the next, next week, which is the council meeting, which I believe is on the 9th. So we need to have a public hearing within seven days of adoption of that document. So it would need to be the 3rd or the 4th. The 3rd is a Wednesday, the 4th is a Thursday. So if you could let me know what works best or let me or Nicole know what fits your schedule, we can get you in to special meeting. So at a minimum, I just, we just need a quorum. If you can't be here. Oh, you're on vacation. Oh, okay. You're on vacation. Somebody, I couldn't remember somebody. Okay. All right. So just overview of taxes. The tax rate is comprised of two components, MNO, which is maintenance on operations, and interest in sinking, which is the debt portion. We have debt obligations that are paid with property taxes. Therefore, our tax rate is comprised of the MNO and the INS portions. The INS tax rate is .063346. That's an increase from last year's value of .058149. That number is a fixed number. As we go through these tax rate scenarios, the INS number is fixed because it's debt. It, it doesn't change. The MNO is what is adjusted. So the current tax rate is .540661 per hundred dollar valuation. The new tax rate numbers are the no new revenue tax rate is .539756. The voter, voter approval tax rate is 578846. And the voter approval tax rate with increments is 591331. We are really only going to discuss three options, the increments not being one of them. We wanted to let you know that we did receive the appraisal numbers from Bear County. We got those on the 19th of July. You'll see on this table that we are experience, experiencing a decrease in our net taxable and taxable values of over 2%, right under 3. I don't think that's any one thing that is that's not unusual this year. It seems like. I think this is happening in many taxing entities are experiencing the same issue as the housing market is slowing. So that this is not to be unexpected. So we ran a scenario where you would utilize the no new revenue tax rate, which is a decrease of .000905 cents from the current tax rate. The budget is based on property tax revenue of 4.117 million dollars. The revenue estimate using the no new revenue tax rate is 4.12 million dollars. This table shows the impact of the new tax rate. The column on the far right shows the difference and your copies are in black and white. But they're red. So it's a decrease. So this table is showing various property values from 200 to 500,000 dollars and showing the current tax bill for Castle Hills using the current tax rate, and then it factors in the appraisal decrease. Now that is just spreading that increase-decrease across every property. Not every property got the same decrease. They may have gotten less or they may have gotten more. It's an average. But you just apply that average and that's how you now decrease the value of that property. And then you apply the new tax rate and you subtract at the end and you're showing it's a tax cut. But if we were to do this, at the end of the day, we're still 250,000 dollars in the red in our general fund. Are there any questions about the no new revenue tax rate? Yes, sir.
I do have a question about the shortage. I know at one point we had discussed bringing over the equivalent of three salaries to be covered by the CCPD. Is that included in the, so it would be 500,000 dollars plus?
Okay. Yes, sir. This is a scenario where you would utilize the voter approval tax rate. That tax rate is .578846. The voter approval tax rate is the highest tax rate you can adopt without without having to have an election or without opening yourself up to a petition that would require an election. So you have the discretion to go this, this, this high. So what happens with this is you don't have a tax decrease, you have a tax increase. But you would bring in an estimated revenue of 4.33 million dollars. It would reduce the general fund deficit to 41,000 dollars.
Can I ask one more question? So the temporary allocation or I don't want to leave the question. The allocation from CCPD, the intent is to have that temporary or permanent?
I don't know. Mr. Perales never shared with me what his strategy was, if that was going to be a short-term Band-Aid, but it would be my intent to phase that out because in a few years we're going to have to make a major purchase of their police cars because they bought those in '24. So you're looking at, within three years, that fleet's gonna have to be replaced. And one of the things that we likely want to do is to start staggering that vehicle replacement versus just in one year buying the whole, the whole thing. You should be staggering them, whether it's a third, a third, a third, or, you know, doing it in fours, you know. We just need to figure that out and develop a plan on that, but I do not want it to be a long-term solution.
Perfect, thank you. I, I personally feel the same way. I just brought that up so the council knows that we feel good potentially about 41,000, but we're really still 390-ish, more or less.
So here you would have these increases. You know, for a $200,000 home, it's $45. For a $300,000 home, it's $68. For a $400,000 home, it's $90. And for a half a million dollar home, it's $113. This does not, you know, looking at the big picture, we don't know what the school district's going to do. We don't know what all the other taxing entities are going to do. You know, that $113 is not sitting in a vacuum on its own. You know, their tax bill's gonna be hit by a number of taxing entities and I imagine we're all going through the same challenges right now. If, if the city is looking at a, a decrease in values, it's safe to assume school districts in San Antonio are all feeling the same pain. So. And then we have a scenario where you would simply just leave taxes alone. This value is greater than the no new revenue tax rate. But it's less than the the voter approval. So we would, it was just a scenario where you just left the, the thing at 540661. You see that it, it does result in people seeing relief on their tax bill. But the general fund deficit would increase to over 300,000 dollars. Our recommendation is going to be to employ the voter approval tax rate. That will jump the budget healing process quickly. But I do want to note, we've also discussed raising the garbage rate. So not only are people gonna see an increase in their tax bill, they would be looking at an increase in their garbage rate as well.
Do you have any idea what that increase looks like?
We are, I believe the number we're looking at is going to $31.
We're at 26 right now? 27?
So you're looking at $48 more a year just for the garbage bill.
Can you go back to the current tax rate slide? We're, it says shortfall 53,826, but we don't have the would increase the deficit.
I fixed that at the computer this afternoon.
Yes, I just wanted to write down the number so I had it.
307463, yes. It has been, it has been a day to get, to get this worked out. We, we've been, we jumped from short-term rentals last night to this and it was a big, it was a big thing to get through this afternoon. But anyway. So there, there's no voting tonight. There's no action required. It is purely a workshop and discussion.
Counsel, Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Duque, is it, what's the status of our reserves?
I'm sorry?
What is the status of our reserves from which we're gonna take this, potentially take this 200,000, 300,000, whatever that number is? Don't we have a couple million dollars in there and maybe a million?
We have a healthy reserve. You know, I don't, I think what I don't want to happen is that we need to dig ourselves out of we need to dig ourselves out of this deficit. You know, I, it was never intended to be in one year we could fix it. You know, even, even using this voter approval tax rate, we don't get out of the hole in one year. You know, but we can make big strides to get it fixed. And then like I said, some of the variables that we still have to try to control salary and benefits-wise, if we can lock that down within the next 12 months, we could have a very solid, we could be on very sound ground going into next summer's budget process to not be in this predicament. But we do have the reserves that we could absorb this, but at the same time, we have to recognize that we're already talking about potentially drawing a million dollars out of that fund balance for a facilities project.
Right, right. Would it, would it have any impact on our credit rating if we use the reserves to balance the budget?
Absolutely. When you go, when you borrow money and go through the debt process, one of the steps is you get a bond rating with Standard and Poor's. It, it could be another firm. I've always done it with Standard and Poor's. And they go through your financials. They have a series of management questions, economic development questions, financial control questions. And they're going to go through your books and they're gonna wanna see signs of growth. They're going to want to see sound financial controls. They wanna see a solid financial history. So you know, a 20% drawdown of the fund balance would likely draw their attention and necessitate them wanting an explanation. Now, sometimes you have growth that'll offset that concern because, hey, they're growing so quickly, they're, their tax base is building. It, it'll, it'll work itself out. It'll, it'll average itself out. But when you don't have those strong pillars and you're only relying on two legs instead of three or four, then those other pillars have to be very strong. In, in Nederland, that was our experiences. We didn't have population growth. Jefferson County was one of the only counties in Texas that was not growing population-wise. And it was a landlocked community, so it didn't have a lot of land for more subdivisions and development. So our fund balance was our foundation. We had built that up and to be incredibly strong. And Standard and Poor's, when we went through that bond rating process, always told us that saved your bacon. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Counsel, any other comments, questions? Mr. Smith?
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Duque. And this question is probably obvious, but I think if nobody asks, it just hangs out there. Are there any opportunities in the budget where we can lower some expenditures? Are there any places where we could make cuts right now?
I I, I thought we were as, but as lean and mean as we could get it down to when we got down to the presentation we made in July. And then these things popped up with the rerate and the IT support. And when we went using the IT support, you know, their first proposal was 200 something thousand dollars and I said, whoa, let's go through this. And we went through it and we said, we said, these are the wants and these are the needs. And some of these needs had been some things that had been delayed. And we can't delay them. And so I think we've tried to put together as tight a budget as we can. I know when we met with the department heads, we didn't sugarcoat it. We were clear to them that we gotta tighten it up as much as we can. And we will continue to be doing that as much as we can as we go forward through the year. Just because it's an allocation of, say, 200,000 dollars, we can get back then down to 170. Let's get to 170. You know, is 160 gonna work? You know, we'll be pushing to save money everywhere we can.
Thank you.
Ms. Haley?
So are we looking at some maybe creative ways that we can increase our revenue through different services, through franchise fees, through other ways? I mean, I was looking online about ways you can increase your revenue and it seems like we could be increasing revenue in, in some different places if we're looking at that. And I mean, things cost what they cost. I mean, if we, this is what we need to do. We're not voting tonight, but you know, we, this is what things cost today. This is what we want. This is what they cost. So, but I think if there are ways, we, and I was thinking about having a regular passport, passport Saturday, you know, adding a couple of more of those in a year and getting people to help. I mean, that's a pocket of money. That's extra money that comes in. If we, we advertise that we can come pick up your personal bulk stuff for a fee. You know, that we, people don't know about that. That's a way we can increase revenue. Just different ways that we, and if we're charging the commercial sanitation people for coming and picking up the trash in the shopping centers, if we're not getting some revenue from that on a franchise fee, I think that's a, that's low-hanging fruit. Maybe we could, we could look for ways to do it that way.
One of the franchise fees that we do not have in place is, you know, we have the standard ones with the utility companies, but we do not have a franchise fee for the private vendors that are picking up trash in, in Castle Hills. Now, what that's going to be, Waste Management Republic is not going to pay that out of their pocket. They're just gonna pass that on to their customers in, in their bills. You know, but yes, that is another form of revenue. We have not spent any time trying to quantify what that dollar amount could be. But yes, that is an alternative form of revenue that could be looked into. But like I said, your, that cost is just gonna be passed on directly to the businesses of Castle Hills that are using that service.
Well, they get the benefit of getting it done in Castle Hills. That's why they're here too. So I think it's worth exploring. I'm not saying go do it, but I just think we, we can at least think about it. And I think a lot of these center owners, you know, why wouldn't they? You know, they're, they're paying for the service. And, and I think that's part of being here, that they can support, support doing that for being here. If they, if they, if they're, I don't know what that would look like for their tenants. I, I'm just thinking about looking at it, so.
Ms. Joyce?
Thank you, Mayor. Just following up on Ms. Haley's comments. Mrs. Amran mentioned something to me the other day. I can't think of the term, but it had to do with an additional tax on vacant land. And it sounded like a pretty significant tax. I will
I, I think somebody sent an email on that. I don't remember the name of that tax.
Fallow, fallow land, fallow land.
That's it. We can look at that and, and run a scenario out, you know, you'd have to try to find, the, the problem with that is identifying those properties.
And, and then I don't, I don't follow. We only have two vacant pieces of land. We only have two vacant pieces of land.
Oh, it was just those two, wasn't it? You're right. Then never mind, that's easy. We, we would have to run that out. We did not run that out, but I can talk to him tomorrow and see if um, we can try to pull that number and see what it could be.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Ms., Ms. Daines?
Well, I, I, it's not a question so much as just a comment. I mean, there's three point seven, eight cents between the current tax rate and the voter approval tax rate. I mean, there's, that's considerable amount of wiggle room in there um, to not press the residents quite so hard and not draw down on our um, surplus quite as much because I definitely don't want to risk lowering our bond rate in case we need that money in the future. And, and Mr. Duque, I agree with you that it would be really nice to have a crystal ball and know what the school districts are going to do and the county is going to do and all of that because all of those numbers are moving. And if they're, if those entities are only going to raise it up to just keep revenue exactly the same and it doesn't go up, then our, you know, seventy three dollars or whatever it doesn't look like very much. But if they all go up and it, then it, then it becomes a pretty hard hit.
Well, I think it's always important to remember your, your, your city tax bill is, you know, sometimes, I mean, compared to the school district, it's, it's half, if not less than half. So we can run more scenarios. Once we, once we all agreed on the math and, and the formulas, this was pretty easy. Uh, it just takes time to run it all out and double check your numbers. But we can run a scenario where we, we split the difference in terms of just, you know, whatever, what, whatever the difference is in the middle, just go to the middle. And then we can run that scenario out. We, we can continue to play with this. Tonight was just here three obvious scenarios, you know, to, to present to y'all to kind of see this is the range of the impact. The no new revenue uh, is the floor. And a city uh, council can always decide to go below that floor and go to the basement. Uh, because you, as long as you go lower, you can go lower. The, the, it doesn't have a, there's no law that stops you from doing that. I wouldn't suggest doing that. Uh, but the voter approval is your ceiling. You go past that, you have to have, you, you open yourselves up to an election. And it is an incredibly tight schedule to get that done because you have to have the election in November. And you would have to be calling that election in August to meet the deadlines to have a special election in November. Uh, you know, I wouldn't recommend that. So um, like I said, there's no action tonight. It is purely informational, the dialogue discussion, uh, questions. And uh, we will I can run out some more numbers and send them to you. Uh, I'll just email them. I'll just PDF it and I can send that to you. It can be something like this, this uh, this slide. And so you can just see, this would be this scenario, that scenario. And then you can just look at it and be prepared for Tuesday. Because Tuesday night at this, at the council meeting, we will need a vote on a proposal. Because that you have to vote to now publish that this is what the Castle Hill City Council has proposed as the tax rate for the year two thousand, twenty-five, twenty-six. So Tuesday, we need a vote. Today, we don't need a vote. We're just talking.
Mr. Duque, I've seen a lot of fluctuation in our IT dollars. And I know at one point, Mr. Peralas was exploring a uh, partnership to help us secure a more favorable IT rate. Based on your experience, how do you feel about what we're paying?
We, we are still exploring that. When we had the vendor give us this, they like to use the phrase roadmap. Uh, I think that's the phrase they've used in the past as they've done business with Castle Hills. Of what they should be doing, where we want to go, et cetera. We took that roadmap, deleted all the costs from it and provided that same roadmap to another vendor and asked them to give us a comparison, a, a proposal based on those uh, requirements. We are still waiting for that proposal. It is fair to say that there may be some apprehension about the levels of service that that roadmap is going to require that perhaps may exceed the abilities of that company. Um, and this was something that I believe we asked for two weeks ago and are still waiting to get it. But we did not want to make that jump until we knew that they were capable of giving us the same level of service that we need. And we really needed that updated roadmap uh, to reflect some things that uh, needed to be done, have been postponed for a, a couple of years. So that way we could tell this vendor, we need this done tomorrow. How much is it going to cost? We've got one vendor, we're waiting for the second. That one vendor is budget, we have the numbers, that's what's in the budget. Um, but if this other vendor comes in and they say they can do it cheaper, then we would be considering making a change and saving money.
In your um, years, I, I won't date you and say how many. In your years of city management experience, is there any kind of indicator that you look at across the industry to determine what trends look like for following years? And, and while you think about.
I mean, I, I knew, I anticipated this was going to happen when, you know, when Gilbert and Nora told me about, you know, the, the appraisal estimate in April was already in the negative. I was like, it's going to be in the negative when you get to August. They don't go up, they go down. And uh, several other cities that I, I keep in touch with, they all said, I either went down or I'm barely up half, half a percent. And they said they're up because of new construction that they've had with a couple of subdivisions. I was like, well, that makes sense. I, I don't know if this is a long-term trend of, of our values continuing to roll down. You know, every few years, the Comptroller's Office puts out this report uh, telling school districts throughout the state of Texas. You know, this, the last time, time it happened, I think that I dealt with, that I, I took a lot of heat from it was in twenty twenty-one when the Comptroller's Office told the school districts, almost all of them throughout the state, you're not, uh, you're not making enough money. And they got with the appraisal districts throughout Texas and said, you're not calculating appraisals properly. And so a lot of appraisal districts had to change some of the, the formulas to bring in more money, you know? I wrote my graduate thesis on school funding and going back to the nineteen eighties and they still haven't fixed it in twenty twenty-five. So you know? So if that were to happen again and, and, and that, you know, I don't want to call it mandate because you know, the Comptroller's Office wouldn't like it being called that. But if that direction was given, then they would be under, they'd be pressured to bring in more revenue. So you would see appraisals go up again. It would be a spike. You know, I, I don't know if you all had that in twenty twenty-one, but we did and we got beat up about it. And I got a long explanation from uh, our appraisal district and, and some people in Austin about why it happened. Uh, so I was like, well, it's not my fault. Uh, it's not our fault, but it, it was what it, you know, so that could happen again. I think we need to focus on um, economic development. Uh, I think it's um, uh, very good timing that the Economic Development Committee wants to present to city council on the next council meeting. Uh, because uh, I know there's not a lot of property to develop, but we, we probably need to folk, make some efforts to get some additional sales tax and to continue to support our businesses that are here now so that they continue to uh, stay here and potentially grow and, and get uh, expand that tax base for us.
Thank you, Mr. Duque.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, any other comments, questions? Okay, uh, we have announcements by Mayor and Council members of the I'm's Community Interest. Do we have anything? Okay. Do I have a mo- motion to adjourn, Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I moved that we adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Smith, all in favor? Uh, unanimous, it is seven fourteen and the meeting is adjourned. Everybody have a good evening.